City of Salem, Massachusetts, the City Council Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, met in the Council Chamber on June 10th, 2024, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing the fiscal year 25 operating budget and capital improvement plans for the following departments: Council on Aging, Parks, Rec., and Community Services, including Administration, the Golf Course, The Witch House, Pioneer Village, Winter Island, and Charter Street, and also to discuss the capital improvement plans. Joining us tonight from the Administration and Finance Committee, we have Councilors Varela, Councilor Posniewski, Councilor Jurislaw, and Councilor Stott, and from the Committee of the Whole, we have Councilor Musillo and Councilor Cohen. And also joining us tonight is Teri Arnold, the Council on Aging Director, Tricia O'Brien, the Director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services, we have Anna Friedman, our Finance Director, Justin McCutcheon, our Deputy Finance Director, Lisa Peterson, our Chief of Staff, Mayor Pangallo, and we have Paul Lever from the Golf Course, we have Elizabeth Peterson, and we have Dave Gilbert. And welcome, everyone. We have a big crowd tonight. These public meetings are for the financial review of best practice and to learn about the departments and how they utilize funds. To view the full budget, please go to SalemMA.gov/FY25, and the homepage also includes, towards the bottom of the Mayor's Statement, a link to the Budget in Brief, which is a very helpful summary. When you come up to present, please tell us about what your department does, anything you'd like to highlight, any significant changes in your budget, and any capital projects you'd like to discuss. The capital improvement plans are in the larger tab, Section 7, towards the front of the book, and I will reference the section by page for the five-year capital plan. And for the convenience of our guests here tonight, we'll be going in the order to keep people here as is most comfortable for their schedule. So therefore, we will be starting with the Golf Course on Section 22, which is Page 572, with the Budget Summary on 575. So again, that's Section 22 with the Golf Course. And starting us off tonight is Tricia O'Brien, and thank you for being here.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us. As my role as the Superintendent of Park, Rec., and Community Services, these other areas fall under me, but we have direct managers of each of these locations. And oftentimes, when we have new councilors, I'd like for you to have a chance to meet them in person, put a name to a face, and they know their areas well, and they're just here to offer support if you have any specific questions that I may not be able to answer. So that's what I like to do every few years. We've been doing this, especially with new councilors. So thanks for having us here tonight, and we are going to start with the Golf Course. I'd like to just kind of start off with thanking Paul for his work in management and incredibly long work hours that he puts into the Golf Course. I feel really fortunate with all of my crew. You really can't hear me? With all of the people that work for me, so I feel like our city is really fortunate to have them, and then I am fortunate enough to have them working for me. Really dedicated personnel, committed to what they do, love Salem, and again, this is my chance to kind of just publicly make sure you know what they do and to thank them as well.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions from the Council regarding the Golf Course funds? Councilor Posniewski?
Thank you. You probably know this one was going to come out of a bag somewhere, this question about the golf carts and what had happened. And I don't know whether anybody even knows exactly what happened, but I'm hoping that we could take this opportunity to kind of explain. I know that last year, there was talk about we were going to electric golf carts, and the golf carts were ordered, and at the beginning of this year, in April, we didn't have electric golf carts because the electricity wasn't installed. So the Council approved $15,000 for the month of April to cover the cost of having golf carts down there, and then another $8,000 for the runover in May. We lost $23,000 because there was some kind of a faux pas somewhere in the red tape, and for some reason, I don't think anybody in here knows exactly what happened or how it happened. And I was just hoping that maybe you could enlighten us and let us know so that, you know, we can learn from this and hopefully not have it happen in other departments. Do you know exactly how this all happened?
So when we're coming up to contract for golf carts, it actually was more about a year and a half. We had to make the decision of gas for three years or electric for three years because they're all three-year contracts. So we thought it would be enough time to get the project done. Unfortunately, we can't really control National Grid in their schedule. We had a few kinks with purchasing and timing of getting it out and getting it out correctly. A lot of it was just the design. Once we had someone in place, we had the work done, but with National Grid schedule, so the portion that we were in control of doing was finished and completed in time. The connection to National Grid in the poles, that is a National Grid job, so they had to do that part of the job. So I think if you ask John Giardi or anyone else who deals with them, we were at the mercy of their schedule, and we tried to push it as best we could. I would say maybe also it was a little bit more complicated because once they were on site, they wanted to do a few more things in terms of getting extra power to the garage, which was lacking. And so they were like, well, if we're going to go out here to do this, we might as well do this too. Again, makes sense, but we're really at the mercy of National Grid and their schedule. Fortunately, we were able to not take the last requested money to Council, which went back to the general fund. But we're still, we still have to wait for the final connection with National Grid and John Giardi to be able to connect to the poles of what we were in control of that was completed.
So this project, which was approved last year during the whole winter time while the Golf Course was closed, National Grid never did the work that they were supposed to do, but we wound up losing not only the cost of the golf carts, but also the revenue that could have been generated because people were coming in April and they weren't playing golf because there was no golf carts. That took a few weeks before we got the golf carts.
Revenue-wise, didn't turn out to be too bad. We did lose a little bit, obviously. One thing that kind of saved us is the weather started off. We opened early, but it ended up being terrible. There was so much rain at the beginning of the year that we probably wouldn't have been letting golf carts out till the second week of April anyway because the Golf Course was so wet. Part of the problem with National Grid also was the power line that we were using to charge the new golf cart charging station was also feeding the maintenance building, and we were having voltage issues. Voltage drops at the maintenance building. Every time we ran equipment, it'd blow circuit breakers, and there was certain piece of equipment we couldn't use. So that snowballed into design of updating whole maintenance area also. All the electrical, they put in a whole new service for the two maintenance buildings and the electrical car charging station.
So right now, we're completely all set and up and running. Is there any chance of recouping any of the money that caused us to spend the taxpayers' money on those carts because of what National Grid didn't do?
I mean, my gut says no, but I guess we could ask Beth Renard if we have any legal recourse for that?
Okay, all right. I know what Paul does for the Golf Course. I'm up there a lot. The Golf Course is in pristine condition. Not only is the maintenance way above bar, there's always something new and innovative being done to the Golf Course, which even makes it more attractive to people who've never played there before. And Paul's there from dusk to dawn all the time, and my hats off to you for all the work that you do, Paul. I know that this didn't fall on his shoulders just because I know what he does for the Golf Course. It's just a shame that we had to throw a lot of money. It's something that we didn't have to throw a lot of money because National Grid, over the wintertime, did not get ready and do what they were supposed to do in the first place. I was just curious whether they could, maybe they wouldn't charge us for electricity for a few months or something up there, but are there any plans to put coverings over those electric golf carts?
Say that again?
Is there going to be a cover over the carts, like a temporary garage-type of?
No, no. Even if the golf cart company took the carts for the winter, they would be leaving them outside because you would need a massive storage facility to have them covered, so...
Are you asking about the electrical?
Yes.
Oh, you're talking the charging?
Yes.
That's being worked on right now. There's going to be covers charging the chargers. There's one up there that we did today as a patent that we're going to use, and probably by the end of the week, they'll all be mounted on the poles.
Okay, all right. Thank you. My apologies for coming right out of the...
That's okay. That's all right. We weren't happy either.
But Mayor, I think the Mayor may have a question.
Yes, I was hoping for some clarity on the funds.
So the appropriation for the cart rentals that was submitted to you a few months ago was from receipts reserved, not from free cash or from the taxpayers, so it was from the golf court receipts. So to whatever extent that makes people feel a little better, it wasn't the taxpayers, it was out of the golf court funds. And there was, we'll talk to Beth about our options in terms of addressing it with the National Grid. I think a lot of people know that when National Grid doesn't show up on time, there's costly implications for private businesses, for developers, for homeowners, and I think regrettably in this instance, you know, we were the customer that suffered as a result, and so we'll explore what options we have from a legal standpoint. Apparently, we were also being, there was a double charge in one of the meters that they identified up there, so there's another reason for us to have that conversation with Grid about recouping some funds back to the city.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and I do want to mention, I appreciate going electric with the carts. Thank you. Councilor Varela?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. Through you two, Superintendent Tricia O'Brien and Mr. Lever, thank you guys for being here. I had a couple of questions. My first question is, when it comes to the mission statement, it seems like the primary incentive is to promoting and learning golf from all the surrounding communities. My question is, I grew up playing golf, and it was a very, you could say, litge sport, and I know in California, Southern California, there was always an attempt from golf courses to try to engage either our economically disadvantaged residents or even people that just have never had the opportunity to play the game. Are you guys doing anything as far as any kind of programming when it comes to the City of Salem, like trying to engage with our youth as far as designing and creating programs to bring in people that have never had the opportunity to play golf?
There is a golf pro that gives free lessons twice a week. I think it's Wednesday nights and Saturdays afternoons is we have a practice area, and he gives the lessons in the practice area for free. Anybody can show up at those times. It's on the website the times that he's there.
Okay, so it's just on the website? Are you guys doing any more to try to get out in the community to let them know that this opportunity is available?
Not currently.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question is, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse here, but I will ask it again from last year. Is there any attempt to find a way to modernize the reservation system, the point-of-sale when it comes to not only the clubhouse, but reservations in general? I know, as we talked about, there's a few companies that have the point-of-sale software to make sure reservations are taken. I know that it's for efficiency sake, it really does clear up a lot of, you know, whether it be written in mistakes or just allowing people to see that open tee times. Is there any attempt, like last year, to modernize the reservation system for the Golf Course?
Yep, we started researching that at the end of last season, and we got a lot of pricing, and there's been more options since the last time we researched that. What happened was, over the winter, we ended up with other projects. We got the carpet change in the clubhouse, the building was stained, dealing with the electrical contractor. So we did the research on that, but the project kind of got dropped because I got too many other projects going on up there. I'm actually really pushing to do this for next winter. We can't change the POS in the middle of the season, so I want to have our Golf Course Manager have a decision made by the end of the summer on what system to use. At first, we thought we were just going to get a dedicated tee time, online tee time system, but the more we looked into it, we're also having problems with gift cards. We don't have gift cards, we're using the old paper. And also, the POS system we're using, the company sold to a new company, and the whole system itself really does not work well for the Golf Course with its inventory and everything. So we decided it was going to be, first it was going to be just online tee times, now it's, we're looking into just doing the whole POS system over to something that's dedicated to the Golf Course. So it's going to be a little bit more money than just the online tee times, but I think it would work out a lot better.
Excellent. That's, I'm very happy to hear that and look forward to seeing a change for next season. And thank you very much for answering my questions.
Yes, I'd also like to follow up on that. I was curious if the lessons that you do have available are for youth and adults?
Yes.
They are for youth and adults. Great, and I just would like to echo what Councilor Varela said, some outreach to communities that don't have any introduction to golf. I think that would be great. Are the classes generally busy?
It depends. You never know because anybody can show up, there's no reservations.
Chocolate, free.
Yeah, it's free, so sometimes there's two people there, sometimes it's 15, you never know.
Yeah, okay, great. Yes, that was a great point, Councilor Varela, and thank you. Councilor Musillo?
Thank you, Chair. Just to follow up on that, do we have discounted fees or season passes for low-income residents?
Not low income, no. Basically, all the resident rates are discounted very low. The residents benefit. We're the lowest around for resident rates.
How much is a day pass, just play?
There's all different types of passes. They're all listed online. Are you talking just one round or a seasonal pass?
Either.
I don't know if I have them in front of me. There's so many different rates, I couldn't even, I don't work the pro shop because the pro shop manager up there, so I'm not looking at the rates every day. We did do some increases in the spring, but we have still the lowest rates around for residents.
Understood, but I'm specifically low income to follow, I mean, I agree, following the mission to make it available to everyone in Salem. I'm just asking if there's a reduced fee?
No, we don't have a special fee for that.
All right, thank you.
Can I just add one thing on the programming because through Kathy, also Kathy McCarthy, my program manager in Parks and Rec., we do do summer golf clinics offering, and all of ours are very affordable, all of our programs, and we do do any discounts for people who can't afford it, and also work closely with the golf coach at the high school, who will also run clinics for us as well.
Okay, great. That's really helpful to know. So through the Parks and Rec. program for youth in the summer, there is flexibility and also through the schools, they run golf programs there? Okay, great. That answers the questions, and thank you. Appreciate learning about that as well. Any other questions from the councilors? Okay, I would also just like to say thank you to Mr. Lever. I understand your day starts very early, so we appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have, the Budget Summary is on Page 575. Councilor Stott?
Sorry, thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the Golf Course budget. Personnel line item of $402,518. Golf Course expenditures line item of $284,788 for department total of $687,306.
Second?
Thank you. Councilor Stott?
Moves to recommend approval of the personnel budget for a total of $402,518, and the expenditures budget in the amount of $284,788 for a Golf Course department total of $687,306, seconded by Councilor Posniewski. All in favor? With the record show, I see four hands plus my own. The motion carries five to none.
Next, we are moving on to Section 23, the Council on Aging, and we will have Teri Arnold with us.
Thank you. I'm Teresa Arnold. You call me Teri. I think everyone knows me as Teri, and thanks so much for having me here tonight. Just a quick overview of the Council on Aging. I think most of you know what our mission is, but we're really there to offer inclusive programming for older adults that affirm life and independence and enhance socialization, promoting overall wellness for our folks, and we strive to do that every day. We have four or five main components of the Council on Aging, and first I'll mention social services. So we have a social work team. They meet with seniors to assist with things like housing applications, SNAP applications, the old food stamp program, those facing eviction and homelessness, collaborating with the Housing Authority often. We collaborate with AgeSpan, and AgeSpan is the old North Shore Elder Services merged with Merrimack Valley, and so we fall within their parameters for a few small grants. But we work with AgeSpan to transition folks who are less independent and might need home care services and make sure they're getting the help that they need if they become homebound or less independent. An average number of touchpoints monthly is about 200 people 415 times, so some duplicated touchpoints with our seniors. That's an average, helping with things like our durable medical equipment loan program, health benefits counseling, case management, and advocacy. A large piece of time spent is navigating insurance plans, especially during open enrollment, October to December, when many people are turning 65 and need to figure out which Medicare suits them because one size does not fit all, and also to help navigate other community benefits for those 60 and older. Currently, we have two full-time social workers. They've both been with us about 30 years, and we do have a vacancy for another position, a bilingual, Spanish-speaking, social worker. I'll talk about transportation briefly. Transportation is headed by a coordinator, and we have seven part-time van drivers. We have a fleet of half-dozen vans ranging from eight to 14 seaters. Maintenance is an ongoing issue as the fleet ages, but we applied to Mass DOT earlier this year, and we are being awarded two electric vehicles slated for delivery later this summer. Work is about to begin this Wednesday to install charging stations at the CLC. We average about 1,000 to 1,200 one-way rides per month. We serve about 300 people. Most common requests are to and from the CLC for activities, programs, services, medical appointments, grocery shopping, and in addition to, in Salem, each weekday, we travel to a neighboring community for specialist appointments like Mass. General Danvers or Lahebeverlay, that sort of thing. So our goal is to try to create as much access as possible for folks. Dining services, we're the Meals on Wheels distribution hub for Salem and also Marblehead. This is an AgeSpan program. They run this operation with the support of our space and our dining services coordinator. Drivers come in in the morning, they pack the meals, they're assigned routes, and bring the home-delivered meals to about 200 Salem homebound seniors and also to a lesser number in Marblehead. We have one full-time dining services coordinator who accepts the congregate meals delivery each morning. Volunteers help staff the kitchen, serve continental breakfast, coffee, and lunch Monday through Friday. The congregate meals are through the Title III C program via AgeSpan. They're free, but donations are accepted. We serve anywhere from 500 to 650 meals a month. The Kitchen Project has been an ongoing challenge. We're in the midst of the kitchen enhancement. I think it's been about three years since we started. There are many stops and starts, with the person leading the project leaving the employ of the city. So Joe Candelaria, our CLC facilities manager, has become the lead, working with Erica Blumberg, who's the dining services coordinator, and myself to move the project along. We're working now with the building department, so we're making some progress. Joe Candelaria is picking up what we hope will be the final designs tomorrow from DMS Design so that we can really move this project. A big goal of the former and current administration is that we'll become more commercial-like kitchen with events so we can do more self-cooking and offer alternate lunches, not only to the seniors, but anybody coming into the CLC. Wellness programs and activities, we have about 16 weekly classes ranging from Pilates, dance, chair yoga, balance classes. We have a Reiki clinic now, meditation, and other holistic offerings. We sponsor the Salem Public Library, pop-up library, two Fridays a month, book clubs, discussion groups. This month, we're introducing a series on vegan nutrition. We host the Mass Association for the Blind Technology Center office hours, community blood drives, talks on scams, estate planning, and more. The public health nurse and another community nurse offer blood pressure checks a couple of times a month. We host podiatrist and pro bono attorney office hours, and during tax season, we work with AARP to offer the tax aid program, which is free, and that's a very, very busy season. We have two afternoon movies a month, special events celebrating holidays. The Friends of the Council on Aging are great supporters, and they are sponsoring our Heart and Soul Conversation Series and a new Zumba class, a Spanish-speaking instructor at 135 Lafayette Street, just started in May, and many other activities. Senator Lovely, Representative Cruz... Senator Lovely, Representative Cruz, and Julio Motiv, representing Mayor Pangalo's office, have monthly office hours for constituents at the CLC. A great collaboration we have is with the Salem Pantry. The team is at the CLC with the new food truck every Wednesday morning. And the seniors love it. And what's also excellent about this, it's bringing new faces to the Community Life Center, so that's a good thing. The Monthly Memory Cafe, which is a welcoming place for those living with dementia and their caregivers. And the Monthly Caregiver Support Group are supported through a CDBG grant. We're looking to start a grief support group later this year as well. Later, late last year, we received $100,000 from the Executive Office of Health and Human Services and in tandem with Elder Affairs to conduct computer training through a digital literacy grant. We've ordered 70 Chromebooks. My office looks like an Amazon warehouse right now. And we will be training 70 seniors, starting in July through the end of this year, on the very basics. These are folks who haven't had access to computers. And after 15 hours of, if you successfully get through the course, you get to keep the Chromebook, which is great. And with this grant, we're able to purchase other technology to benefit the seniors at the center. I just wanted to talk briefly about Spanish outreach, because it's come up through the years as a goal. We've always tried to be inclusive with other cultures. But there's been much more of a concerted effort the last year, year and a half or so. And late last year, we started working with a group called Metro Bridge. This is, we applied to Boston University's Initiative on Cities, their Metro Bridge Program. This program cultivates projects by seeking out the distinct research needs of particular cities. And the goal was for the students engaged in a certain class, bilingual students, help us identify barriers as to why more Spanish-speaking older adults don't frequent the center. So we have done outreach in the past. We've gone to the Spanish-speaking mass. We have a Spanish version of the newsletter. We have done door knocking at the point with minimal success. We're just digesting the results, their findings in the studies. Some things we already do, some things we need to do better. And they gave us some nice new ideas of what might draw more the Spanish culture into the Council on Aging. And I can share that information. I'm going to be sharing it with the Board of the Council on Aging this Wednesday night. And then we'll put that out to all of you as well. But I'm really excited about it. It was an excellent process with students, fresh eyes on something. And I think it's identified a few new things that we can certainly try. And again, I'll be sharing the results and the findings with you. We have an excellent collaboration with Salem State. During the academic year, we host senior nursing students every Wednesday to come in. And we're not a medical model, but they're there to study the social determinants of health. And really, some wonderful programming around working with the nurses. And there's so many seniors interested in sharing their stories. A really successful program. We also work with occupational therapy at Salem State. They put on wellness programming for us. And we have a very good relationship with the social work department. We've hosted interns in the past, and we plan to do that again this coming year. And just one, two more brief things. I want to thank all of you who participated in our Senior Day celebration on June 1st. It was a lovely day at Forest River. I think this will be an annual thing. And we honored seven excellent people for their outstanding service to the community. And lastly, on June 27th, you should have received an invitation. The State Office of Elder Affairs asked us to host a listening session on Age Friendly Massachusetts. For not only Salem being an age-friendly community, but other North Shore communities who are involved with age and dementia-friendly. So you should be, it should be in your inbox. But it's Thursday, the 27th, at 1:30 in the afternoon at the CLC. And I certainly would love it if you could be there and lend your perspective on the success or gaps of age-friendly. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, you have a lot of great things to talk about. As one of your volunteers, I can attest to the incredible importance of your work. You know, assisting with isolation issues and all the challenges that go with our older adults. And it's a long list to appreciate there. And also, yes, the Celebrate Seniors was wonderful. And one of my questions was, will that continue? And I'm happy, happy to hear that that is a yes. And I am familiar with the work you've been doing on the BU study with the students. And I think that's terrific. I've been really looking forward to that data as well. Also, I was wondering, as far as, you know, the opening for a bilingual social worker. I think, you know, that's been, I know there is a shortage of social workers right now. Has it been challenging to get applicants? Is, do you think the, you know, the financial offer for the position adequate? Just would welcome, just hearing a little bit more about how that's going.
So my thoughts would be that this position has been vacant for maybe seven, close to eight months. It's, the starting pay is $45,000. There is a $5,000 bonus, but there is a requirement to speak Spanish. So I think that's our, our challenge right there. And I've approached Salem State, as I said, with a great relationship with their School of Social Work. I talked to other colleges and promoted the position. But we had a few applicants, but they were not fitting.
Great, thank you.
I might add, I'm sorry. The mayor's given me the go-ahead to reframe this and maybe look at it, I would be working with Lisa Camerata to reshape this. And maybe that we could have a social work associate, who would be someone who would still be doing social work, but more complimentary to the roles of the two folks who've been in the position for a long time, to at least get another person in there. It's a start, if we can at least draw from that. And I'm looking at North Shore Community. College has a program, it's a two-year associate in human services. And there is one with a concentration in gerontology. So once we reframe this, I'll be reaching out to North Shore Community.
Great, thank you. Counselor Varela?
Thank you, Counselor Merkel. Throw you to Mrs. Arnold, thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate you answering those questions. I had a quick question about the kitchen. What seems to be the underlying issue with this project to its completion?
I think it was who was actually going to be the point person on this. Former staff person in the building department was the lead and running with the program with a firm called Russo Bar. When that person left, it seemed to have fallen apart a bit. And then the head of the building department left to go to PBD. So we were like, oh, who's our point person from building? So it ended up, we said, we've got to pick up the pieces and move with this as quickly as we can. Went back to DMS, and they were the designers of the CLC. It's just been a lot of stops and starts for a variety of typical reasons. And, you know, I think we're in a much better place now. I'm going to think it was who's really the point person. And we just said, we've got to roll with this. But now we're in good talks with Vula. They're aware, they're taking their part now and running with it. You know, I'm hopeful now. We are, we are within the line of the ARPA funds because the project is essentially started. As long as we have those contracts signed by this December and the work completed by 2026, we're okay. But I sure hope it's done before then.
Awesome, thank you. My last comment would be, you did mention that there seems to be, you know, a struggle to get, you know, Spanish-speaking engagement, just members or constituency of our city of Salem. And I have to say, that kitchen would be an integral part to connecting that. And I think that when it comes to our, you know, our Hispanic constituency here, food is very important, and I think that's one way to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, I'm curious too, with the expansion of the kitchen, will it require more additional employees for the programs?
We're certainly hoping so. And I've, you know, I put that out there the last two budget seasons, knowing that we weren't quite ready, but it would be a need coming along. So as soon as that kitchen is ready, we will need help if we're going to achieve the goals we've set forth.
Okay, good to know. Moving forward, Counselor Rossillo.
Thank you, Chair. I will second, Senior Day was great. I love the idea, and I'm excited that it's going to move forward. It's really fun. I had a question about the Meals on Wheels. Where are those meals prepared?
So there is a vendor called Trio contracted by AgeSpan. They're out in the Merrimack Valley. They deliver those meals all over the North Shore. So it's the same meal that our folks are receiving as a congregate meal at the Community Life Center. So we don't prepare them. But we are responsible for testing them to make sure they're the right temperature to serve, the meals we serve. And then those workers who come in to deliver meals do the same to make sure they're appropriate for delivery.
So we do Marblehead also?
We give AgeSpan space for their drivers to come into the CLC. And then they'll disperse the Marblehead routes and the Salem routes. And they also work with AgeSpan through these grants. So we do have a small Title III, Title III C grant, which actually helps pay Erica's salary. But it's a small grant that comes from AgeSpan, so I try to be neighborly. Let them use the space.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Yeah.
I continue to be concerned about the seniors who are just not connected, isolated in their homes. I mean, we've talked about this previously too. One question, and I'm pretty sure we've asked this before, and I don't remember the answer. We had a great phone list of seniors during COVID, and there were calls made. Are you still using that list to check in on people who are not connected to the senior center and maybe not getting services? Do we know how they're doing?
We do not call them on a regular basis. We did hook up with a group called We Care over the last year or so. And it was a group of volunteers trained to call folks we identified as being isolated, homebound. And so the social workers did the best they can to put together that list. That program has gone by the wayside, so I'm looking to identify volunteer job for people to make those, like a friendly visit, but over the phone. You know, we, a lot of those people did okay after the pandemic. It was a matter of staying isolated on purpose because of, we didn't know what we didn't know, what the impact would be of the pandemic. But we're mindful of it. And we are doing our best to keep up with those who are homebound, known to us. And when they need more help, refer them to AgeSpan. Because when they become that homebound, they usually need help with cleaning, laundry, bathing, all those kinds of things.
Yeah, okay. And then one, one other question. On your, on the data list, it lists the tax work-off participants, 60 maximum allowed. Is that citywide seniors who are working off their real estate taxes? Is that what that number is?
It's, yeah, it's, right.
It's interesting that the number's only 38, and 36 last year. What are we doing about that, Mr. Mayor? How are we advertising it? How are we getting the word out that this is available? Because it did drop.
We can get you more information on how it's promoted. I mean, Kathy McCarthy's probably a good person to ask about that. And Stephen Cortez, I know, presents on it as part of the tax rate hearing each year, how they promote it.
That's not getting, how many seniors are logging in to watch our tax rate discussion?
I'll let you know how we're marketing it and how we promote it. It's also a question of if people see a value in spending the time to save some dollars off their tax bills.
And another piece to that too is while we promote it, there need to be spaces or departments within the city willing to take a volunteer into the department for the tax work-off role.
So do we not have 60 jobs for these people that we've budgeted for?
Currently, not now.
Well, that's interesting. I mean, we increased it to 60. I'm surprised that there's not 60 opportunities then. So I'm wondering now if people are being turned away because there's not enough space, enough jobs.
Get more information for you on that. But my sense is that there may not have been roles to fill.
Okay, that's concerning, but thank you.
Let the record show that Counselor Harvey joined the meeting. Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Merkel, not being a member of the committee, throw you to Ms. Arnold. Appreciate all the good stuff you do. I think to Counselor Varela's point, you know, having more food options and a associate or social worker that speaks Spanish will, you know, go a long way. We had a meeting with the school department. And because of some, you know, funding that we don't have anymore, we're losing several positions. Do you have any relationship with the schools where, you know, people can volunteer or fill in, do some work that might be needed at the school level?
So displaced school employees coming in? I mean, I have, I have not engaged that?
No, I mean, like, I know when elder services used to do their awards, they would always have an award for someone, you know, who was contributing to the community. And I remember this person who used to go into a fourth grade class and be in the class and kind of help out. I'm just wondering if there's, you know, so many of the people who are seniors have experiences and qualities and, you know, work qualities that could contribute in our general community. And I was just thinking, you know, maybe come into a school and teach a class or something, just something like that.
Yeah, good idea, good idea.
And one last thing, you talked about the EV. You're getting two new electric vehicles. And you're going to wait for National Grid, like five or 10 years to install the capacity, obviously, as you heard from the golf course. I'm assuming that in the meantime, once you get the vehicles, you can use the existing chargers that are on the premises?
Yeah, I mean, Trish can speak to this a little bit better than I can, I think.
I don't think that we actually need anything from National Grid. It's just the company that's installing the current EV charging stations. One is replacing and updating the one that's there. And also making, they're going to be public access to it as well, which we, we didn't have, those two when they were part of the CLC building project. There's no way for anyone to just scan, like scan their credit card and charge their vehicle. They would be confused, like, why can't I do it? So we requested for those ones to also be, have public accessibility. So I think we're in better control of this and don't need National Grid.
Any more questions from the council? Counselor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I have two kind of comments, not really questions, but one might be a question. For the transportation, I think it's definitely a great service and well-used. I'm just curious if the data on the types of rides, amount of rides is shared with our Department of Transportation. I know that the Skipper program is very different than the transportation that you provide for your clients. But I think that there could be some overlap in the city services that we have there. Because I know there are a lot of seniors that also utilize the Skipper as well. So I'm just thinking, as we're thinking of next steps for our transportation, how to kind of grow the services throughout the city. I'm curious if there's any kind of interdepartmental conversations there.
Not, not around the particular services we're providing. I mean, there was, I think when there was an active transportation task force under Salem for all ages, there was probably more communication. But it's a great idea to share our data with Dave Kacharsky and know that when, you know, our, our transportation program runs about 8:30 in the morning till about quarter, 3:00 in the afternoon, excuse me. We do refer to the Skipper as well. And you're right, there are some seniors that use both. Then we have folks that, you know, are very comfortable picking up the phone, calling, knowing that voice on the other end. And that's not going to change, at least for, you know, maybe another half a generation or so. But some seniors are, you know, more tech-savvy and happy to hail an Uber or call the Skipper. So we do, we do refer. But I think you're right, that it makes sense to share data.
Thank you. And then my next kind of comment question is across the two spectrums. So the tax work-off participants, that was my question, is the 60, just we don't have the applicants or we don't have the spaces to fill? So this is, the fact that we might not have roles for volunteers to fill goes into my comment that I say every year, that I really comment that I say every year, that I really feel that we could definitely have some more intergenerational programming. And I think this goes hand in hand. Like, I think it's great that the Council on Aging is at the Community Life Center, which also has the Parks and Recs Department, because I think there's just so much opportunity there. I think I started crying during the budget hearing in 2020 because I loved the activities that you guys were putting on in the parking lot to make sure, like, it just really, it warmed my heart to be able to see the outreach and the, the community aspect that you were doing. And I grew up very far away from my grandparents and my mother used to drive me to the local Council on Aging Center and literally drop me off and be like, go in, learn, hear about the history of the town. And that was just really, it really was able to help form you growing up. And I think that that's just such, something that's missing nowadays. Like, there's not really that conversation between the two. And I think we have so many great programs and offerings to those two kind of different clientele aspects, so kind of a comment to both, sitting right there, that it's definitely, I think, something that we can continue to build on. Like, I think Bingo Night might have been like a good one. That is a great opportunity for, for all of our residents of the city to kind of get together and do some intergenerational programming. But I just think that that's such a missed opportunity that would be so impactful for everyone here.
I think Kathy McCarthy has done some level of intergenerational program through the years and under the guise of Park and Rec. And also just know that we, we do work in some ways with some of the schools. The Charter School just recently made baskets. They had, you know, they could spend $10 per person, they could make X amount of ba- baskets to bring, leave something that we could deliver to homebound, people who were needy. We have the groups come and entertain, work with us. We can get school, calls from the schools, students who are working on special projects and they need to come in and talk to an older person, so we will set them up to have that type of experience. It's kind of school by school, class by class. During the pandemic, I remember I, I was sort of a visiting person to a class at, I forget which school it was, but middle aged, middle school age students and they wanted to learn what we did, what was the Council on Aging. And so we do have these kinds of things. So there is some interaction with youth, there's some interaction with community college and college students, but sure, there's always room to try to grow more intergenerational programming. And we have done a bit of that through Park and Rec. Yeah, that's right. We had a group come in where students read books to the seniors and that was really interesting. And again, people that come in and say, I want to interview, I want to learn about your life, I'm writing a paper. And we've had younger kids and we've had high school kids do that sort of thing. But yeah, ongoing programs with a regular schedule is something we could try to do.
Yes, Ms. Ryan, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back a little bit to the senior tax work-off and just clarify because I thought I heard maybe the advertising and filling those slots is something we should be doing and thinking more about, but we have not ever turned a senior away who has actually applied. Because I thought I had heard that, I just wanted to clarify that. It may not be like, you know, maybe they wanted to work in a certain office or had a certain skill and they, you know, didn't have a position or didn't have something available. We still find something for them to do, so we don't turn anyone away from that.
We have a fair amount of folks right at the Community Life Center, so it is successful for those who are participating, for sure.
Great, thank you for clarifying that. That's helpful, appreciate it. Any other questions from the councilors? Okay. I certainly want to say thank you to you and your team and also the friends on the Council on Aging that make a lot of those very large-scale events. So much fun, all of you. Very much, very much appreciated. Councilor Stott, and we're on page 604.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the Council on Aging budget personnel line item of $563,429, expenditure line item of $112,782 for department total of $676,211.
Second.
Thank you. Councilor Stott moves to recommend approval of the personnel budget in the amount of $563,429 and the expenditures budget in a total amount of $112,782 for our Council on Aging department total of $676,211. Seconded by Councilor Pozniewski. All in favor? Thank you. Let the records show, I see four hands plus my own. The motion carries five to none. And again, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we are moving on to the Witch House in Section 22, and it is page 580.
Thank you. Again, just an opportunity to be able to introduce Elizabeth Peterson to some of the new councilors if you're, if you have not met her yet. Elizabeth runs, manages the Witch House, Pioneer Village and Charter Street Cemetery, which falls under, under us. She does a spectacular job managing her crews, managing crazy crowds, dealing with not our, not our residents, crazy residents, but crazy tourists and does a fabulous job with everything and very, very committed and also involved in a lot of our current projects that we're constantly having meetings about and planning, such as Pioneer Village.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Peterson, for being here as well. Any questions on the Witch House? Councilor Varela.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. Elizabeth, thank you for being here tonight. I have to say, as not one of the new councilors, I've never actually seen your face, so I've only the myth, the legend. Thank you for what you do. You guys are one of the few departments that just rake in money for the city, so thank you very much.
I appreciate that.
Great, Councilor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I just wanted to echo, I'm like, you're not on a screen, you're here. So thank you for all that you do for managing the craziness that is down there, but also thank you very much for your work with our additional projects that we have within the city, land acknowledgements and whatnot. Really appreciate your insight and just your assistance there, so thank you.
Yes, I echo those sentiments, you are very much appreciated, the work that you do. Okay, so the budget summary is on page 583. Councilor Stott.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the Witch House budget personnel line item of $292,446, expenditure line item of $113,853 for department total of $343,299.
Second.
Thank you. Councilor Stott moves to recommend approval of the personnel budget for the Witch House in the amount of $229,446, the expenditures budget in the amount of $113,853 for a Witch House department total of $343,299, seconded by Councilor Pozniewski. All in favor? Okay, let the record show, I see four hands plus my own. The motion carries five to none. Next, we have Pioneer Village, which is also in Section 22 on page 587. And this is expenditures only. Anything you'd like to tell us about Pioneer Village before we open up to the council? Okay, or any, you know, just if you like.
Well, we're in the process of moving forward with contracts for the move and for Phase One, so it's design, right? And so it's a lovely place to be after all of this time and conversation. So I'm looking forward to seeing some, some movement and changes in that regard.
Great, thank you. Questions from the councilors? Councilor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Merkel, not being a member of the committee through you to Elizabeth Peterson. And I have met you in person, which is terrific because you've done a lot of stuff, not just, as Council Stott said, on land acknowledgements, but on history for all the projects that you're affiliated with. We allocated $670,000 to Move It. I have met with Michael Kraus a couple of times and my concern is that I don't want to spend a lot more money and every day it's deteriorating. It's, it's not in a resilient place. I don't believe any structure can exist there long-term. And I know that the floors and other things are deteriorating. So it sounds like moving forward, but I'd just like to express a hope that it goes quickly so that we don't have to come back to the council and ask for more money to support the structure.
We echo that, that sentiment as well.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to seeing the move happen as well. Any other questions? Yeah, Councilor Jerrislaw.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a couple of questions about the move. There was supposed to be a traffic study done. Has that been completed and what are the findings on it? It's in the.
Yes, we did get funding and worked with David Kacharsky to plan the traffic study for this summer, so it hasn't been done. We wanted to make sure we hit the various events and things that are happening in the summer where we have the highest volume of traffic. So we specifically pointed out, you know, dates that we know there's a lot of people there so that they have data on, you know, slower times and also very, very busy times.
We only had like one meeting with, sorry, one meeting with the neighborhood so far. Are they going to schedule any more, community?
Yeah, absolutely. So Mike Kraus and Margaret Wood, myself and Elizabeth meet pretty much weekly and have been doing this, working with the design team for tentative designs. And then it hasn't gone to the Park and Rec Commission for full design or anything else, just working with stakeholders. And we put into their contract to, I believe it's two public meetings that will be upcoming for that discussion.
Who are the stakeholders of this? I don't think any of the neighbors are actually involved in stakeholders. And I would think that at least some of the abuddas or the neighbors would be involved in being a stakeholder.
The stakeholder group is initially, sorry, stakeholder group is initially developed with all local nonprofit, regional nonprofit entities that would, that do interpret Salem's history and that would have a say and be impacted by the move of the village. So that's initially who we did reach out to. We have met with neighborhood groups at different times early on and then we will be returning to that.
We've only met with the Willow's neighborhood actually once on this. Michael Kraus came out with the design team. We've only met once and there's nobody from the neighborhood that's actually a stakeholder. And I think that's very important that we should have somebody, there's a lot of neighbors right there that are very close abuddas to this project. And I think you should be reaching out at least to some of the neighbors and the abuddas to be stakeholders in this. We're going to be dealing with this traffic and with people in the neighborhood constantly.
So we did have a meeting with direct abuddas early on in this as well. And then, and then we opened it up to the Willow's Neighborhood Association and we will definitely be having at least two more public meetings. But I agree, I guess the stakeholders were the original historians, people that were really envisioning what the new site, you know, was going to be interpreted and in the history. But I agree, there's like kind of two sets of stakeholders, the stakeholders with the project and the history in mind, and then the community who will be impacted by, by the move.
I think the Willow's Phase One went very well because you had a lot of the neighbors, people from, not just from the neighborhood, but across the city that were actually stakeholders in that project. And I think it went very well because of that. And I think that you should definitely reach out to.
Yep.
Community stakeholders, not people that live in Arlington or, you know, and they have nothing to really, other than the history of the design of it, they don't do every day-to-day with traffic and, you know.
Exactly. Two weeks ago, actually on the meeting, I brought that up, that we haven't really had one in a long time. You know, there were a lot of stalls, so I don't want you to think that all these great big plans were continuing to happen. A lot of the stalls were involving the Historic Commission, demo delays and things like that. So I brought that up, that we need to have, we need to incorporate this into the contract to make sure we have more public meetings as we go to the stage of full designs.
The neighbors were very surprised to hear that this is like a done deal. They thought it was just in the very early stages, the last meeting we had, and now we're hearing that this move is happening and there were, a lot of neighbors were very upset.
Yeah, no, I mean, the only thing that really got done was the schematic design. So nothing is a done deal until it goes to, you know, it comes to full design with public input, public meetings, then commission, approval, and obviously funding.
I'd just like to see more public input on it.
Okay, sure.
Councilor Pozniewski, did you have your hands up?
Yes, I did, thank you. Tricia, this project, this move has come, has been concerned from the South Salem neighborhood, neighbors who, but Pioneer Village and also the Willow's area where the Camp Numkeg, where the Girl Scout camp used to be, we're spending, I remember having a discussion when this money matter first came up, we're spending nearly a million dollars to make a move. We're moving something that has really no historical significance to someplace else that has no historical significance, but yet we're ignoring Fort Lee, which is across the street from Camp Numkeg, which has historical significance. So the talk back then was, why aren't you spending the million dollars in making something that has history in Salem, cleaning it up and make, bringing it back to something in, to a condition similar to Fort Sewell, where people could go up and see a real Civil War war fought. I believe the ramparts, the granite rampart are still, are still there. But instead, what we're doing is we're taking something that's in South Salem, Pioneer, Pioneer Village, we put a YMCA camp there, which again, I hear the complaints from the neighbors who are abutting that because there's a lot of noise first thing in the morning. Their question to me was, why isn't the camp down by the pool? Because there's no houses near the pool and they wouldn't be disturbed. I really didn't have much of a, of an answer on that and still really don't have much of an answer, other than the basketball court is there and there's a beach nearby. But that could be argued that you've got the pool and the beach on the other side. So again, we're taking something that's impacting one neighborhood negatively. Some of the people over there actually still think it does have some historical significance because now it's nearly 100 years old. It's been the site of many films being filmed. It has some appeal to the tourists. During October, people park at Forest River Park, they go over and see Pioneer Village, and then they go over and see the Hocus Pocus House, and they go back to their cars at Pioneer Village and they go on. Now we're going to take a little piece of that away from Salem. But I think the part that probably bothers me the most is the fact that we're spending a lot of money on something that doesn't, we're doing it to put it on the trolley line so that people can see what life was like in Salem. It's just, it seems hokey. We should be concentrating on, on Fort Lee and cleaning that up and bringing people up there instead.
If I could just address the Fort Lee portion of that. Fort Lee's, sorry, Fort Lee's research studies, cleanup and accessibility to the public has actually been part of this project, at least in terms of goals, from the very beginning. So from the first talks, we have said that eventually Fort Lee will be brought into the fold so that interpretation from Pioneer Village can then lead to interpretation, public access to Fort Lee as well. Patty Kellerer can speak to, to this study far better than I can, but she is currently in the process of getting grants, funding and the work. of getting grants, funding, and the work and research all completely done to make all of that possible. So it is, I do understand what you're saying. It is a concern for all of us, and I didn't want anyone to think that we were omitting Fort Lee in this plan. It would be a missed opportunity for all of us.
That's good. That is good news now. But back then, it wasn't talked about. All the money was going into the move from one place to the other, and nobody had Fort Lee at all. Even during the reconstruction of Salem Willow's park, during the different phases, Fort Lee was, was left out.
What I'll do is I'll take a fresh look at the information that we're sharing on the website about the project. And I'll make sure, if it's not already been included, because honestly, it might have just, you know, I might have missed that, I'll make sure that it is.
Thank you.
That anyone with that concern can find their curiosity sated there.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for what you do, because you do a lot. Thank you.
Mayor Pangala, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just going to add the, so if you recall from the planning department budget presentation, we did receive the Mass Historic Grant to do the preservation plan for Fort Lee. The city applied in the past for funding through the battlefield's preservation funds and not succeeded. So that to have received the planning grant is, I think, a good first step in the longer process to preserve and interpret Fort Lee. And it is directly related to this project, as Elizabeth mentioned, having both the people there to see the site, but also the resources to be able to preserve it, maintain it. The struggle with Fort Lee has always been a great idea, a good intention, and it gets overgrown. And you know, the city has always relied on volunteers, I think unfortunately, to try to keep up with it. And we have an obligation to take care of that site and to share it with the world. And so to be able to interpret multiple centuries of Salem history in one, in one area for people to learn about, I think is actually a pretty special opportunity.
Counselor Jerrislaw.
Thank you Chair. From my understanding, we've been trying to get Fort Lee, the neighborhood, cleaned up since 2019. When we started our Neighborhood Association, we've been asking the city for five years now to clean up Fort Lee. We've gone to them numerous times. We even had a committee within our Neighborhood Association. And it's only starting to be talked about because you want to do, move Pioneer Village. So let's just make sure we have the facts in order, because we started this five years ago and we've got nowhere with the city. And now that you want to move Pioneer Village down to Camp Numkeg, there's big talk about Fort Lee. So I just want to clarify that. And I have all our notes and all our minutes from our meetings, if you ever want to take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the councilors? Okay, so Pioneer Village, the budget summary is on page 587. Counselor Stott?
Okay. Thank you Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for Pioneer Village budget expenditure line and department total of $26,980.
Second.
Thank you. So Counselor Stott moves to recommend approval of the Pioneer Village expenditures budget, which is also the department total budget of $26,980, seconded by Counselor Posniewski. All in favor? Let the record show, I see four hands plus my own. The matter carries, five to none. And next we have, in the same section, Charter Street, and that is on page 596. And the budget summary is on page 598. Do we have any questions or comments? Give everyone a moment to think about it, but I don't. Nope, no questions or comments. Okay, Counselor Stott, the budget summary is on page 598.
Thank you Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the Charter Street budget personnel line item of $146,144 and expenditure line item of $64,690 for a department total of $210,804.
Second.
Thank you. So Counselor Stott moves to recommend approval of the Charter Street personnel budget for $146,114, an expenditures total of $64,690 for a Charter Street department total of $210,804, seconded, excuse me, by Counselor Posniewski. All in favor? Let the record show, I see four hands plus my own. The matter carries, five to none. Next we have Winter Island, which is also Section 22, page 589. Budget summary on page 592. Okay. And we have Dave Gilbert with us. Is there anything, information you'd like to offer? Any comments or just respond to questions?
Well, we're off to a good season. A little rain, like Paul had mentioned earlier in the season, but we're recovering from that. We have the typical challenges that we face every year. This is my 14th year now at the park. And, you know, personnel swap out, as you might expect. You know, there's new challenges every year, but we, I'm happy to say we have a good staff in place. I'm still looking to hire a couple more key players or key personnel, if you will. But things are looking good in that regard. We have the playground, which, I don't know if Trish wants to speak about that eventually, but that's, that's coming, that's pretty much done, completed now. We have the okay to use it. And I can tell you, it's been used already by the Salt and Salt School with their annual picnic at the park. So it's off to a good start.
Yes, I think it's terrific about the playground too.
Yeah, it's, it's actually, it's so beautiful. And when you go up there, actually, I'm a little afraid of heights, I'll admit it. But when you go to the top of the tower and just before this, even the spring, when the leaves aren't there, I mean, it is an unbelievable view of the whole surrounding ocean. But very popular, we still have a little work to do just with grading outside of the playground. But everything is, is up and running, fully accessible surfacing. And then we just have to kind of match the grades and the accessibility for, it's not a paved parking lot for the dirt parking lot leading up to it, but it will be, you know, kind of hard packed, so it will be accessible. We don't have money right now for paving. It wasn't really paved before either, but the grading will be improved, leading up to that playground. And specific signage and lines will be there for accessible parking as well.
Great, thank you. Counselor Verella?
Thank you Chair Merkel, and thank you for being here today, sir. I have to say, I second the playground. My two-and-a-half-year-old was on the top of that tower at the Salt and Salt. It's intense and really cool. So my question is, when it comes to your reservation system, I know it's mostly all online. Are you guys fully booked for the season at this point?
Not 100%. We will be, we've been running pretty, pretty close to 100% up to this point. But until the kids really get out of school and families start traveling more, we won't be 100%. A lot of time, it's really deceiving when you come down to the park on a weekend, if it's a bad weather weekend, you won't see all the tent sites or the RV sites occupied. But on paper, we typically are. People choose on their own not to show up if it's bad weather. Many tent campers that visit the park or camp at the park are Salem residents, so they have the option to go home if it's poor weather. So, you know, you'll see a tent site unoccupied now and then. But our occupancy rate, it's actually pretty high, yeah.
My last question was, when it comes to the Winter Island stickers at the front, I guess you would say the front kiosk there, do you guys have a point of sale for people who run credit cards for those at this point?
We do. We can sell stickers through, by use of credit card in the office, but not at the gate. The gate, as you know, probably know, it's a bit of a choke point with campers and boaters and, you know, beachgoers, you name it. So I, it's never been, I don't think, in my opinion, it's not a good idea to try to put a gate, a credit card machine up there. We have had one in the past, and it just tends to tie up the line. And before you know it, cars have backed up past the Plum and Youth Promise, you know, buildings.
Awesome. Thank you for answering my question. If with it being a choke point, I guess that's why. So I appreciate the clarity. Thank you.
Yes, I'm glad to hear Salem residents are enjoying the camping. Yes.
I just want to also mention that parking stickers are also sold at the Community Life Center. So a lot of after, later after hours there, at Dave's office, and also downstairs at City Hall.
Thank you. Counselor Jerrislaw.
I just want to say I had the pleasure of working for Dave for the last two years down at the Gate House there. And it does get very busy. And I don't know how many people I had to turn away at night because they would just show up for reservations. So it does get overcrowded. We were looking for places for people to go, but it was always very full. And you do a great job with what you have to work with. You do an excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, agreed. Thank you. It's a Salem gem over on Winter Island. Any other questions? Counselor Stott?
Thank you Chair Merkel. I just had two quick questions, one of which will not be, when is the playground going to open? Which I think I ask Trish that perhaps every other week. So very excited for that new playground. My first question is, the rental measure that you have here, is that for the function hall? What's the ones, what is that rentals for?
Function hall.
The function hall. So I had two questions I'll ask them quickly. The first one is, how does one rent that function hall? Is there a reservation system or do they have to call? And then my second question is about the, where did it go? The beach wheelchair? How is that available?
Okay, the beach wheelchair is available upon request. It's, it's on any day, weekdays, weekends, any day the sun's shining, any day we think we may have a possible opportunity to rent, you know, to use it free of charge. It's out for people to see right across from the bathhouse as you come down the hill before you turn to the office. We keep it right there, easily accessible. It's closer to the beach that way. In the past, we've had it up at the Gate House, but when we used it, we'd have to wheel it down, which is not a problem. But people see it at the bottom of the hill anyways. And it's just right there for people to use. Your second question was, the function hall and the pavilion are rented through the office, through phone calls, through emails, we respond. We start renting those two venues, like for, this year, I started renting it in last fall, you know, for weddings are becoming more popular, services or ceremonies, receptions. So those, we understand, require a little more advanced planning. So we try to, you know, be accommodating that way and make ourselves available or make the date available to them so they could do some planning ahead. But all the, it's all done through the office. It's not done through a point-of-sale program or anything like that. Each case is very unique, and we have to, you know, every setup's different. And it's hard. We take reservations, of course, on a first-come-first basis, first-come-first-served basis. And, you know, they have a couple weeks to respond to us, you know, to lock in before we make it final. But yeah, it's all done through the office. I sort of, I admit, I'm a bit of a micromanager on that because I'm scared to death of double booking events. It's just, we have it, and I'd like to keep it that way.
If I may just follow up, do you have any, and just curious from my own curious of research that I'm doing elsewhere, do you have any like policies or price schedules or fee schedules? Or is it just one flat fee for everyone? Is there a contract that signs?
There is a contract that's signed, right. So currently, the prices are for a weekday, our Salem resident, okay, for a Salem resident, the function hall is $400 on a weekend. And the pavilion is $500 on a weekend. Non-resident, the function hall is 500, and the pavilion is 600. There is a bit of a price reduction for the weekdays. I believe it's only about $25. So you, but same for resident and non-resident. So the pavilion's rented on all-day basis. The function hall is rented on a six-hour basis, which they typically stick to. We do allow them a little extra time if they needed to bring in food and drink and, you know, set the tables up the way they, you know, would like them.
Any other questions, Counselor Stott? No, you're set. Okay. Counselor Posniewski?
First off, David, you know, to say you do a good job is an understatement. It's beautiful over there and with what, with what we have over there. But my question to you is, is there any plans or any design changes for like the, the old officer's quarters, which is kind of like the old dilapidated, boarded-up building that just sits there and nothing is happening? And is there, is there any talk about anything, and maybe the mayor knows this, about what we're going to be doing with the hangar, some future vision on any, on either of those two things? And also, we have another fort down there, which I, Salem residents, you know about it, but not, I'm sure that a lot of campers who come in from out of state don't even realize that we have a revolutionary fort, fort pickering down there. That's, is there any, is there any plans on, on doing anything with those properties?
I haven't heard anything recently, Counsel, on the latest plans for the barracks or the hangar. I get asked that question a million times, you know.
Bet you do.
Yeah. But I hesitate answering because I'm not sure where we're at.
I've seen both.
Yeah. So there are no, as Dave said, there's no immediate plans, I think, but long-term, looking for strategies and ideas. It's going to take a partnership with an outside entity and a fairly complicated funding process and regulatory process because of the park restrictions and the zoning that's underlying there, is my understanding. So right now, no long-term plan. The city has gone out in the past and issued requests for renters, RFIs, and not received anything back from people that have the financial capacity to be able to invest the many millions of dollars that it would take to stabilize, preserve, and reuse those buildings. So we'll, we'll keep trying for it. I think like one of the paths that I'm, I'm looking toward as a possibility is, is there a nexus between those sites and what's happening with the offshore wind terminal? And I don't mean from a operational standpoint for the offshore wind companies, but is it as an educational and interpretive site for school groups and programs to come and learn about offshore wind and climate tech and what that means? And does that unlock some possible partnerships with some of these wind developers to invest in stabilizing those buildings? And will Mass CEC even be interested in doing that? So they're investing heavily in New Bedford, in research and development sites and sites for education and public information. So I think that they could also make some more investment in Salem. It helps save those buildings and also have a great view of the, of the wind port.
The island does have a long history and deep-seated in the, in the city and its, and the goings-on in the city. I know that between the fort and the fact that that was used as an execution place after the witch trials, and, you know, the fact that the Coast Guard Station was there, the officer's quarters, I was told that the fire department at one time was using it to, to stage training. And the building is in such poor shape now that they don't want to send firefighters in there. So if it's in that poor shape, let's just, just take it down if we can. But I, the other part of it is that, again, it's another part of Salem that people really, if they go there, there's really no direction on showing them what has happened there in the past, in the days of the fish dry, drying by our indigenous ancestors over there. And the, you know, the fort that protected us during, there's just, just no central place or vision that people can go to and kind of say, oh, this place is cool. It had this, it had this, it had this. And people may, some may find out when they're camping there, but not everybody does because it's just not.
More interpretation.
Exactly, exactly. Just something to chew on. Thank you.
Is there someone with a question in this room?
Um, not currently, no.
Any further questions? Counselor Musillo?
Just a quick question. Is there historic preservation, like a restriction on either of those buildings? Are they on any registry?
I'll have to get back to you on that. I'm not sure offhand.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no more questions. Okay, seeing no more questions, the budget summary's on page 592, Councilor Stock?
Thank you, Chair Merkel, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the Winter Island budget personnel line item of $232,717 and the Winter Island expenditure line item of $93,325 for a department total of $326,042.
Second.
Councilor Stock moves to recommend approval of the personnel budget for Winter Island in the amount of $232,717 and the expenditures budget in a total of $93,325 for a Winter Island department total of $326,042, seconded by Councilor Posniewski. All in favor? Let the record show, I see four hands, but my, plus my own, the matter carries, five to none. And thank you, thank you for, for all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you, I don't think I got to speak before him, but, you know, obviously I said I was fortunate to have these directors and Dave does a great job. It's a lot of work to manage seasonal and get seasonal employees who, you know, they need a lot of oversight, a lot of assistance, it's not, it's not as easy as having a full-time person who's there all the time, and Dave does a really good job, I think, recruiting and managing seasonal people and having a few hands and getting a lot done, you know, as does Paul facility-wise.
Yeah, agreed, getting seasonal and managing seasonal workers is very challenging, what you, what you manage is very challenging.
And just a shout-out to Joe Candelaria too, because he, although I know that, I know that the bigger picture of the barracks building is a whole other issue, but in terms of Dave's office, Joe has done a very good job of trying to stay on top of things when Dave reports them, he, he's up on the roof, he's roofing, he's fixing things, dealing with the, you know, plumbing issues, electrical issues, so Joe, Joe saves the city a lot of money, someday I'll bring him in, he's a little shy, but to meet you guys.
Please tell him we say thank you.
Good. Thanks, Dave.
So next, we are moving on to Parks and Rec, section 22 at the beginning. Great, and again, Trish O'Brien is our director, and thank you for, for being here, looking forward to it.
Thank you, yeah, so this is a busy time of year, again, shout-out to my staff, in particular Kathy McCarthy, who's the Park and Rec Director in terms of programming, and with my role kind of entailing a lot, she does a lot of the day-to-day and actual programming with the kids, so it's a busy time, we're getting ready to, we've, I think we are maybe one more position, but almost fully staffed, actually, I believe we're fully staffed today for our summer, free summer playground programs throughout the summer, running from June 24th to August, sorry, August 16th, Monday through Thursday. Fridays are field days, which will include time at the pool between 9:00 and 12:00 or a field trip day. The field trips this summer are kayak and canoe, and canoes down the Ipswich River, Pirates Museum, Sky Zone, and the Gloucester Maritime Museum. A lot of the field trips, a lot of the programming that we do are funded, you know, by obviously the municipal budget to a point, but I also have a Friends of Park and Recreation Group that does some fundraising, which always gives us the opportunity to offset costs for anyone who needs, thank you, who needs assistance, so I'm really grateful to them for that, and we, our mentality has always been, and especially with programming, is we will do any program, try any program within our means, some of them are successful, some of them aren't, but I am never going to say no to any of my staff that want to try a new program, I want to encourage that creativity and not always just do the same things, and they, they love that, and I think my Friends group gives me that opportunity to support that. So a lot of, a lot of the field trips this year, we are funding through my donation program through the Friends of Park and Recreation to pay for the buses, so we, the charge to this, the actual child to go on these field trips is very minimal, it's really just to get into the Sky Zone, so transportation is covered completely by, by our donation account from Friends of Park and Rec. We also give a lot of scholarships away through the basketball, probably 2,000 to 3,000 a year for the travel basketball teams, which, which also gets kind of offset by our donation account. That would also include the pool, pool scholarships, anyone who, who asks for assistance with pool, we were able to take it from that account as well, and I believe we gave out about little over $3,100 in financial assistance for the pool as well. Our partnering with Spalding Adaptive Sports has increased, on purpose, we reached out to them, they reached out to us, we, they used to always do adaptive, what do you call it, archery, but now we've expanded to pickleball, tennis, yoga and basketball, so we partner with them, and that's their, their programming, we, we do the facilities and support them in advertising and promoting their, their events as well. Let's see, what else? Obviously getting ready for the pool season, we had Board of Health down there today, they'll be back a couple more times to get everything ready to open in June, the mayor has approved for us to open the, the weekend before school gets out, I forget the date exactly, and then it will be open for the rest of the summer, June, starting June 24th, so that weekend before June 24th, open Saturday and Sunday. The pool will be open Tuesday through Sunday and closed on Mondays, similar schedule to last year. We did take a lot of feedback from the community, we're in our third year now, and adjusted some of the programming in collaboration with the YMCA to accommodate people's requests, and we feel like the schedule's in a really good place now, we always will continue to take feedback, and I have the same mentality for that, like you can try new things, but you want to just stick with what, what you find is the most successful in, kind of accommodating the most people possible. I guess trees, I could talk about trees a little bit, the planting plant at Forest River that was approved this year, we planted 78 trees at Forest River, you know, with the, I forget what the disease is, the, what is it called?
The ashbore.
Oh, ashbore bug, yeah, did, did a job on those trees, unfortunately, and some of it aged, and I know, and I am not joking when I tell you I shed tears about the beech tree at the Willows, I actually called in a separate, like another company, just desperately saying, are we absolutely sure that this has to come down, there's nothing we can do? It really, it really came down to a lot of age, and we had them specifically kind of look into that, and, and it is close to, I think, 200 years old, so there was nothing we could do, it was just sad, you know, it just takes 200 years for a tree to become that big and beautiful. But we, we really are committed to replanting, and we've also replanted a lot of trees in the Willows, and in Phase Two, we'll have a, a second plan of replanting of trees as well. We did a small planting at Memorial, and obviously last, I think it was last budget year at the Common.
Okay, well, thank you very much, you answered a couple of my questions, I was curious about how, how much outreach you've received for financial assistance for the pool, so it sounds like if it's 3,100, it's, it's been, you know, quite a few people that you've been able to assist. And one other comment too, about, you know, wanting to get our older adults to our other recreational areas and other opportunities, one, one other benefit to the Salem Senior Celebration Day was a lot of the, a lot of the attendees had never been there.
Yeah, yeah.
They had never been there, and like, this is wow, I mean, it is wow when you see the pools out, that was another added benefit about, you know, usually it's Winter Island for, for, you know, our larger.
Yeah, and I've talked to Kathy about potentially, I mean, there's no reason why, again, with funding, if I had it in the budget or if I needed to through my donation account to, we have options of the day off, which is Monday, where the Y is not, you know, it's not crazy kids all the time, that we can't do a senior, you know, seniors-only day down there, so we've, we have talked about incorporating something like that into, you know, one of the Mondays this summer as well.
Yes, that, that's, yeah, that's what I was thinking too, I know how my mother, through her senior years, just loved that swimming group. Any questions from the council? Councilor Cherslow?
Thank you, Chair. Trish, I was just wondering if you have a maintenance program for the other two remaining trees? One's a beech, but I'm not sure what the other, the other lodge tree is, I know it's not a beech tree.
Yeah, I talked to Ray Joden for DPW, and he is going to do a separate from the Willows Phase Two, which only really addresses the corridor and, you know, certain areas, to actually do a, a tree assessment study of the rest of the Willows and, and see what, you know, what we can do. We did, we did aerate those bigger trees in that, in that section, we did, it probably needs to happen more often, you know.
Did a study Phase One of, I remember, what's the name of the landscape architect? I'm thinking GZA about the seawall, but no, it's the other hatch.
Oh, yeah, hatch, yep, yep.
Right, they did a whole study of all the trees.
Yep.
They were doing Phase One.
I think a lot of that was inventory, so what I had asked Ray to do is to really look at preservation of the existing trees, like that kind of a study, so sort of separate from the planning of, you know, new trees or, or design or inventory, so we might know a tree, you know, what condition they're in, and sometimes the red ones we can't save, but sometimes the ones that fall in the yellow category, we could save, and obviously it's worth it if it's a mature tree that still could have 25, 30 years left in it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm so glad to see you have all those programs, even, I remember taking tennis lessons when I was a young kid in Salem, that you keep continuing those programs.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Harvey?
Thank you, Chair. Question in regards to Gallows Hill, the baseball diamond, are there any plans to finish that project, to complete it, to make it like a legit baseball field with dugouts, finish the fence on the third baseline, maybe a scoreboard for the kids, so when the high school's playing up there, they actually have a field?
So.
Took away the one down at Palmer Cove, and they put it up there, and it's, it's not completed.
So, I mean, I was part of the team, but this fell under planning and Jenna Iced, when this project happened, it really was about the irrigation and solving the irrigation problem at Gallows. In terms of Palmer, unfortunately, the, the lights, all those had rusted out, it wasn't a great place by the ocean, that actually, one of those lights fell onto the field, definitely would have killed someone if it, if it hit somebody, and so that's how the origin of kind of moving them or moving the fields and expanding on, on the Gallows Field. From my understanding, from planning and all the meetings that I went to, is it's just a, it's a challenging site in terms of space, there's a lot of ledge at, at that site, so that wasn't in our budget. I, I think there's a possibility we could look into scoreboards, but I, I think that there's a misconception that it's like the school's field, it's really a city field that the school uses, they have, they have opportunities on, on their own campus that they could, and have in the past had baseball fields in that lower field, so I think there's a little misconception out there of it, we're glad to help them and use the field, we do all the maintenance for them, we line the field for them, but that project really was about irrigation and fixing the irrigation, that, so that field could be used by them. So the dugout question, I, I guess I could defer to the Tom Divine in planning, but I think it.
He told me to refer to you, or Planning Board told me to talk to you because they said in the budget, it got cut, and that was Parks and Rec is the one that said how to, how to proceed.
Okay, well, any project goes through the Planning Department, so that budget is for the project, I guess is my answer, that was Tom Daniel, Tom Divine was the project manager who works for Tom Daniel. But as I recall, that was the reason, is, is it was ledge, there's ledge everywhere up there, we actually had to re, redesign some of the irrigation because there was ledge, and I'm not even talking about ledge like where it's obvious, it was ledge under, basically just outside the rate field fence. So I guess the answer is yeah, budget, but it wasn't budgeted to have all of those things, it was to fix the irrigation so that they could actually use that field. Tommy Doyle, I mean, Scott, the then athletic director, they were a part of that stakeholder group as well.
Any other questions, Councilor Stock?
Thank you, Chair Merkel, great job, I think, on the park maintenance this year, everything looks really good. I had two quick questions, the parking stickers sold, is that citywide, like all parking stickers, not just those that are sold like at your CLC or?
Yeah, I think that includes all the three sites.
I think it would be great if we could track the Forest River pool passes that are sold, like the seasonal ones would probably be easier to track because you probably have those numbers, looks like you do.
I do have them, I know, because I actually noticed that they, they aren't on that chart part, so I did look them up. So last summer, we brought in 17,000 in daily passes, so that's typically just the $5 daily pass, and then in the, sorry, in the category of, of kind of season passes, it was 16,750, 152 families, 82 individuals, 38 seniors and 24 youth, that might not have been covered in a family pass, so maybe more like a teenager, and $3,155 in financial assistance.
Yeah, I think the 16,000, that was the revenue, was that?
Revenue, do you have that receipt reserved?
Or what was that 16,000 number that you said?
That was revenue, sorry, for the daily passes and the, oh, my God, season, thank you, season passes, 16,750.
So was it 152 family season passes, 82 senior passes, and then 30 youth or other season passes?
82 individual, 152 family, 38 senior, 24 youth. Those are people that chose to actually get a season.
Season pass, yep.
Yeah.
I think that would be really interesting to see track over the years, especially as you're adjusting the schedule.
Yeah.
To see how that changes. Sorry.
In case this is helpful, total revenue for the pool in FY '23 was a little over $43,000, and so far this year in FY '24, it's just under $44,000.
So that would probably include, obviously, the function room, so we can get that info and.
Like you knew my next question. I was going to ask similar questions, how do you rent out the function room, do you have set policies and prices, and is it like a you-have-to-call reservation system?
Um, yeah, so we do have a little, yep, that it's not online, they just, they just call through our website. Dave and Chelsea, who is a new, recent hire in the past month or so, month and a half maybe, they do work well together, so when someone is booked, they kind of say, oh, try, refer each other back and forth. I think Chelsea is doing already a really good job of, of trying to market it, she just started, but she's been very, very flexible in terms of literally someone called and she went in on Sunday, they called on like a Saturday and said, is it available tomorrow? So I think you'll see that revenue jump up because of her willingness to kind of basically do that, but we do have a policy, we do have the same thing in terms of Winter Island, signing a contract, taking a damage deposit. You're going to ask me the rates?
No, no, actually, I think it's more just a comment for me, that I don't think it's necessarily, like the rates, I appreciate the accessibility, I think people are aware of it and just have a hard time of getting contact to schedule it, I get that feedback a lot, like it's just kind of, how do I even do it?
Yeah.
Like they know it's there. a lot. Like, it's just kind of, how do I even do it? Like, they know it's there, or they've heard of it, but it's a little unobtainable because it's, there is kind of this mysterious, how do you book the function room analogy?
Yeah. I think we do need to do a better job of that. We're, you know, obviously trying to market it on the website. I'm on the committee with Bobby and some, you know, many other city employees on looking at the new website option. So that, you know, I think, I felt like my department is really complicated in that, and maybe there's a potential to really expand and give them their own identity a little bit more than just under, just kind of under a link, under a link, under a link. So, and I think we did have some challenges with some staffing last year in terms, in terms of getting back to some people that we discovered. So I think with this new hire, I am very confident it's already going much better.
Great. And then if, and one other question. What's a pooch pass?
Pooch pass is for the dog park.
It's different than the dog license? I thought that were.
Correct. So it's just a pass to use the dog park. And that money goes into an account where if I want to spend any money from that account, I have to come to council and request how to use that money or what to use it for. My second year, I think, I came to council and we redid the, we got a new gazebo shade structure for them. I think since COVID, it's gone down a little bit. I know Don Famico, whenever I ask him, he'll make a stop by. And I believe the police got another position, didn't they, for animal control, animal control? So he thought they could spend a little bit more time there enforcing it to get people to actually come and purchase the pooch passes.
Is that like the space account? Is that, okay. So does that, like, when I send messages like, the fence isn't working, or the water's not on, is that revenue used for that, or is that just comes out of parks?
If we had to, we could, we could come to use it, but we try to, we try to fix things faster than that if we, if we had the funds. So between, sometimes DPW and their maintenance, maintenance fund for the parks and mine, I mean, DPW's is a little bit bigger. We prefer to get it done a little bit quicker. But if we, if it was a cost that we couldn't absorb, we would come to the council and ask for that.
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I think this is an easy one. Trish, is there gonna be a concession stand this year at Forest River Park? And if there is, is it gonna be run by the city, or is that gonna be a private entity?
So right now, when we opened the pool, we ended up putting that out to RFP. And the gentleman who runs the Tea Time Grill was the only applicant to, to offer to do it. So they are doing it again. This would be their last year. I have Chelsea meeting with, with the young woman who did it last year to go over the schedule and come up with a plan. But it is, it is out to bid. They are under contract for one more year, and that will have to go out again this, this winter.
And it will be open the same time as the pool hours are open?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions? No, seeing none. So the Park and Recreation Budget Summary is on page 567. Counselor Stott?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval for the Park and Rec General Administration Personnel Budget for $479,362 and the Park and Rec General Administration Expenditure Line Item of $507,749 for a Park and Rec Department total of $987,111.
Second.
Thank you. So Counselor Stott moves to recommend approval of the personnel budget in the amount of $479,362. The expenditures budget in a total of $507,749 for a Parks and Rec Department total of $987,111, seconded by Counselor Proznuski. All in favor? Let the record show, I see four hands plus my own. The motion carries five to none. Right, so I believe last for the evening. We'll be, we will go over to the capital improvement plan for the Parks and Rec Department. This is in section seven in the front, the large tab section in the front. And it is on page 257 at the bottom. And this is the five-year capital plan. Ms. Ryan, is there anything you'd like to point out about them, or just have us move on to questions? It's totally up to.
Um, yeah, I'll take any questions.
Okay, great. Again, that starts at the bottom of page 257, the Parks and Rec. Any, any questions? I just said, one quick question. Any updates on the Willows Pier that's in there?
So the, I'd like to actually publicly, I think Bill McHugh, obviously, he's been a huge part of it. It's parkland, but it's kind of his expertise, so he's, he's been very, very involved. I think the plan is moving well, and as far as I heard, it's gonna be finished by the fall. And then once the, once they're staging and a lot of that equipment is out, then the Willows Phase Two can, can kind of get going.
Great. Thank you.
And you all know about the design. The design is gonna be a little bit different. It's gonna be more of a T. It's gonna be obviously made of, I don't know, all the mechanical things or engineering things, but structurally, much sounder. And I think the community's really excited about it. We've missed it. It's been like weird, right, to see nothing there. It's been strange, but it's an exciting project for sure.
I'm excited about it as well. Okay, so Anna, have we, I believe we've covered everything tonight that we were supposed to. Okay, well, I want to thank you for everything. Your department, your team does everything, really.
Thank you.
It's, it's an incredible amount of work and brings a lot of joy to people.
Thank you so much, and we appreciate your support as well. Thanks a lot.
Great.
I know, we're the fun, we're the fun crew.
We, we are. And during COVID, we certainly realized how necessary your services are and our outdoor spaces. Yep. Counselor Verella?
Thank you, Chair Merkel. Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned, and thank you, everyone.